I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, in the title with liberty and justice for all.
Your head and the father, please guide the county council to make the appropriate decisions for the county, and please watch over all of the Montgomery County employees as they go throughout their day to work.
Amen. The first item is the consent agenda, which is the August 12th, 25th, and 26th minutes, the same series, and the cash balance report from the auditor. I did note that on two of the items, August the 12th and August the 25th, I don't know that this is any big deal, but it made mention that the next meeting was September the 12th instead of the 9th. So those two things are, need to be corrected. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as corrected?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Is there any public comment on the agenda items for today? Being done, we will move on to the additional appropriations. County General, the public defender, we don't see anybody.
Brian is out of the office right now, so he asked that we speak about this. This is, these are the additional appropriations that are needed to bring them up to compliance to be on the state program.
So technically, we already okayed that.
Yeah, yeah. This is just, we had to advertise the additional appropriations and formalize the request.
Okay.
Okay?
Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Oh, we, you have to have a motion, don't you?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, now the question.
Yeah. These are subject to reimbursement, correct? Forty percent?
Yes.
Right.
Right. The...
I mean, they qualify.
They, yeah, they, the, the goal was to have everything in place for them to qualify beginning October 1st, so the fourth quarter would be reimbursable.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded that we make these additional appropriations for the public defender's office. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Okay, Mr. Sheriff.
On the folks of the overtime, we have one or restaurant that's on Karen. It's obviously the best creative void at the school. They talk about the superintendent. She wanted to maintain, obviously, the police presence. So we've worked out a deal where we have, you have to be going to school each day at various times Monday through Friday to various schools to continue that coverage. The 3475 is half of what we bill South Lawn. And totally, we owe them $650 a month. Without doing this, we would only owe them 3475. So the additional 3475 is to cover the overtime expenses for deputies doing that on a day off to fill that void. I just won't have enough in my overtime budget to do that for the remainder of the year. So this is the money that they're paying us for the officer that's on leave to fill those spots. If we don't do it, then we just wouldn't have an officer there, but we also wouldn't be billing it. So that would be like, it wouldn't become an, I wouldn't bill South Lawn for a service that I'm not providing, if that makes sense.
I'm with approval. I'll say.
It's been moved and seconded that we appropriate the 30,000 points and my office's share broke on all those in favor, say aye. I'm opposed to saying aye.
And I guess just for the record, this will be an ongoing request, month to month. I mean, we're going to continue this on throughout this year and then obviously through the school year. So just, just so you know. The equipment repairs, there's, there's two things there. One, obviously, the jail roof. We're scheduled to get that going here soon. The total for that is $259,520. That was approved by the commissioners. The contract's been signed. And then the other was the $30,000 habit bill. That was, that was approved last year. That work was completed. Some of that was completed last year, some of that was completed this spring. I just got the invoice unbeknownst to me. I just assumed I got taken care of last year, that I did not. So you guys threw the $30,000 last year and just never got spent, and now I've got the invoice to pay for all of that. So that's what those two things are.
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the equipment repairs for that ship, all those in favor say aye. Oppose the same. Motion here.
And Ryan, the, the roof was under the engineer's estimate.
Yes. Originally, we thought it was going to be 275. It came in 259, 520. And I think, I don't know, I mean, it'll just be a multi-line claim, but I think we've got $19,000 left over at the jail bond. That can also be applied to that and taken off of that total. Obviously, if there's more approved and it's not spent, I'll take it back.
If there's something spammed, something comes up, and we've got some money.
Yes.
And how long will it take you to get this done?
It's supposed to be approved by the end of October.
So be before that, that's good.
I hope so. I hope so.
Thanks.
Thank you. I need to remind my fellow councilmen that we need this line, and you need to stick right into it.
I think about that.
Uh huh. So, so here, I'm the chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sherri Hill of Montgomery County Social Communications Center. So my additional appropriation request is for overtime and the other fund. Last month, it was the 1235 fund, and this month, it's the 1222 fund.
Or motion? Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the overtime for the MCC. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose the same.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you the dog tax person?
I can be. Oh, Jen Adel, Chief Deputy Auditor. I haven't announced that yet. The, this is the...
Formalization, again, of what you agreed to submit to the Animal Welfare League. This is the additional funding that was requested by Kurt Homan, and it passed the council. We just had to advertise for that additional appropriation.
I remember when we talked about it, okay.
And we do have a balance after this in that account still, right?
Yes. A very small one, but there's a balance.
Just in case something happens.
Yeah.
Did you have a comment about dog tax? Because I know there was a problem with collecting it, right?
There was what?
Was there a problem with collecting it?
No, not real, well, it's, I just want to make the council aware.
My pedal has been treasured twice. They haven't been doing their reported collections on a monthly basis. I'm trying that hand. So I did talk to Kurt Homan and Sherri from the board back in July to discuss making sure that everyone is doing their part, you know, the county's doing our part, and that the animal welfare league is doing their part. And so, we didn't get anything in August, and we haven't got anything yet in September, but I'm just making you guys aware of that as well. It is part of the ordinance that they are supposed to be collecting for the, like, detention and then the time they adopt it all. So just making counsel aware of that, okay? Any questions for the dog tax? We are going to be sending out the dog tax form next April, or, and then we will be advertising in November, or excuse me, in October for the dog tax collection at that time.
This October?
For the November, Dr. Baker. We'll be advertising in the newspaper with our normal tax collections, like that they can pay online, they can come to the office, they can use the drop lots, or they can pay it down online early.
That form says option tax. Is there any way to get that out to the general public, because really, if you're going to have animal welfare, it's still about option, you're supposed to pay your tax.
So we have put that out there, saying that it's the option for the county to decide to adopt that ordinance or not, and Montgomery County has chosen to adopt that ordinance. We did work with our state board accounts field examiner, and he did approve for us to redesign that form, that state form. It's a state prescribed form, so we didn't think that we could make any adjustments on it. And he did approve it, as long as it was consistent. All the other information was the same. So we did redesign it. We were wanting to send out the new forms in April, and, or excuse me, I was going to send it to our turner in March, send them out in April when we send out the tax statements. And for cost reasons, I selected not to send it out, because we had so many old copies in the office, as well as the animal welfare league, as well as being able to pay it online. And we will continue to send them out next year. That ordinance says that the treasurer shall not make it. And so when we send those out next April, it will say, just county dog tax, it will not say option, okay? We knew how that from the state board account. I mean, in our, our newspaper, we say that, you know, anybody that harvests.
The fund just says option, and people get the idea that it's options.
And that's a state thing, I mean, that's, but the form will not have that word on it for future use.
Now, trustee used to collect it, he used to get a tag, and he used to come around and make sure that the day, and then it's kind of all on you. And they fought during paying property tax, they would try to capture that money during property tax payment time. But back in the day, when trustee did it, he came to your ass and counted the dollars. So that's, that's the change that's been a little harder to collect. Thank you for that extra work.
Absolutely. Do we vote on that?
I didn't think we did. I don't have a motion yet. It's been moved and seconded that we paid the dog tax, and, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose the same sign. Okay, it's been passed. Motion carried.
Do you need me to talk about giving money back?
You're very good. I'm chief of Rachel. I have some money to return to you, to, I don't know, $18,000 based on physicians not being filled and people retiring, saying that they would like to have some time off from work. So just give the money back. But this does not mean that I don't have this in my budget next year. It simply means this year, we've done without the boys. Please and thanks.
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the reduction of the appropriations. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose the same. Okay, thank you. Thank you. We almost had a motion.
Ryan never does that for us.
That's correct. I want you to remember that. Yeah, who does that every day?
County General, law books. Is this you too, Jennifer?
It can be. This was just due to a shortfall in the line. I do not have the form in front of me. Mindy's got it in front of her, as to specifically what furniture and/or fixtures they were wanting to purchase. There you go. So they're moving money from the law books line into furniture and fixtures, or requesting to do so.
Is there a motion? You have to speak into the mic.
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we moved the money to the county general for the law, from the law books for furniture. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried.
Hello again. Hello again. I have to say, my name is Ian Sheri Hill, Montgomery County Social Communications Center. This is more of last month, cleaning up the lines. I just had a coworker ask me if I needed assistance with budgeting, and I kindly replied no. So just a lot of people moving around. We've not had people in positions, so when they, when we did fill them, I had to move them to another line, so it's just kind of that kind of stuff. Group insurance, I fell short. And also with the social security in that for my portion of Mike Davis' salary and Perv as well.
Any questions before?
Let's get to it to the end of the year.
I hope so. It's a lot of people that I make these ladies go through.
Moved to approve.
Mike, please.
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved all of the transfers for the Montgomery County Communications. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose the same. Motion here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have an offer?
Seeing that there's none, we'll move on to new business. We have the appointment to the health board. The nomination is Katie Lindsay, and I believe you all received her resume, and she seems very well qualified. It's very impressive.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Katie Lindsay to the health board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. And next, we need to approve the nomination to Phil, is it Little? Little to the Crawfordsville District Public Library Board. He would be replacing Owen Bennett, and it's for a short replacement, because his assignment would end in June, on June 30th of 2027.
I'm of approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Phil Little to the Crawfordsville District Public Library Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Okay, solid waste.
Okay, the law just requires you to conduct a public hearing on the solid waste management district budget, which you've received, so this is just your time to conduct a public hearing on that, hear any public comments from taxpayers.
Are there any public comments? So we don't have to vote on anything? Just, okay. Being done, we'll move on. Does anybody have any public comment about the county budget for 2026? Being done, we move on to the ordinance, approving the recorder's request for perpetu... I never can say that word.
Clerks, the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. So each year, the recorder submits a budget to you, and if she includes in that budget funds for the operations of her office from the perpetuation fund, rather than for copying equipment and that sort of thing, she must certify to you that she has enough money in the perpetuation fund to meet her needs for technology and copying and equipment. So Ms. Cox has done so, there's a certificate there for you. This ordinance is required that you pass this each year before you pass your budget, so that you can use the money in the way that you generally have. So you do this every year, and this is just introduction of the ordinance, which would allow you to do so. You can vote on this at your next meeting, and then adopt the budget, including funds in the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund as part of the operational expenses of the office.
I believe you've received both of those letters and the emails. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, being done, then... Okay, go ahead.
You also have before you ordinance 2025-3, which is your budget ordinance or your appropriations ordinance. And although we're pretty early in the process yet, that, the state statute requires two readings, so this is the first reading of the ordinance. It's a line-by-line list of your appropriations that are proposed. You may make changes to this prior to adoption, but this is required to be done. Mindy Byers spent the weekend getting this ready for you, so we appreciate that. But this is just introduction only. You don't need to take any action on it today, obviously.
Anybody need any, a question about that? All right. Oh, Jennifer actually did it. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. All right, do we have any?
Hey, Joyce.
Yeah.
I do have a question on the budget. So are we feeling comfortable with the revenue side, or how close are we?
On the revenue side, I feel pretty comfortable. I'm really interested in your ask about...
Yeah. We can look at that later, but, so you're feeling comfortable with the numbers that you're showing? That's just what I asked.
Mindy Byers. We feel very comfortable with the revenues that we estimated. I would like to look at what interest we've received in all the estimates, because it's been a few months since we looked at that, so I would take a little bit of that again for you, what I see. Also, did you actually have a, I don't know, but yeah, we, we're pretty good on the revenues. And again, I know we've had discussion about this, but we are a conservative, we believe that about 85% of what, what we've received or what we expect to receive for those estimates.
So if we're thinking about...
Talking about here.
What would we, what would we look at next? Because that's meant to be October. You remember, right? October 12th or 14th?
I think it's 14th. Yeah, that's, that's the budget adoption, so I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, my question is, I think we'll be able to have enough information and be ready to approve budget in any October, whether we think about end of month, so.
I'm happy to meet with any of you to go over this. I provided a few of you with a workbook that I think will help you see where you, where we would end up being with any changes that are made. I also provided salary worksheets. I'm happy to share that with the entire council, that's a...
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. And I'm happy to meet with all of you, any of you, to go over that, and how, how do you utilize that to come up with the final budget? And I think we can meet, if we meet, it's just a few, so we don't have, we don't break rules, I can meet with you at first and have you go over that, so we can be ready for October. And I'm yours until we get out in October, so we can meet this, that's what I'm saying.
How many people?
Jennifer as well.
Three.
Yeah, just three. So, yeah. We'll break it up and break that up however you wish.
Jim, I'll pull that form up, and let me see what it is.
Go to the Monday tab. I kept it in the same order as the presentation, one, certainly because it made it easier for me, and two, because it's how you guys might add your notes from those department presentations, so. If you see it, it looks just like it did during the presentations. I added a column that is a working column, sorry. You can adjust those however you wish. It will adjust all of the numbers. It will also, if you go to Jennifer, the county general, that's the big one, the county general tab.
That's the top one, late Tuesday.
No, there you go, she's got it. It will adjust the green column as well, so that breaks it down between the different series, so like salaries and wages, supplies, services and charges, and capital outlay. And then if you find the 4B, or the county general, the next county general tab, there you go. That is a, the first one was a comparison between 2025 and 2026. This one is a comparison between Jeff, Peter's numbers and, from March to April, I think April, and ours now. And that's basically, shows our estimated, our beginning balance, our estimated revenues, what we expect to get from the levy, what we will expend through 2025, what we expect to expend from the budgets in 2026, from the different services, and then if there are any additional appropriations that we expect to happen in between now and the end of the year, and then it shows you where, how we're going to eat into that. Eat into the fund or feed the fund.
One of the things that you showed me with is, if you click on, it's an Excel program, so if you click on a number, you may be able to see where that number comes from.
Yeah, if you, if you are trying to figure out where the numbers originate, if you just go into there in Excel, I can't see, sorry people, up in this area here, it shows you the formula that's in there, and it tells you exactly where to go. If it just says, like, equals sum, it's on the same spreadsheet. Jim, could you click on something that says expected levy? Like this 11,723? There you go. If it says equals and then has a worksheet name, it's pulling from that worksheet. So you would just go to the worksheet that's labeled 4, 4B levy funds, and then go to cell B24, that's where it's pulling from. And you can kind of follow, if you're familiar with Excel and all that type, you can kind of follow those formulas. And I can show you guys all that when, if we meet. But everything's kind of tied together. So if you use those Monday, Tuesday worksheets, and adjust those green columns, then, sorry, it will feed all of those subsequent tabs, so you can see the change that you're making, how they will affect the bottom line. So, I know it's a lot, but it's, it's a lot to look at, and there's a lot of different ways to look at it, so we just wanted to give you what we, what we thought might be helpful.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. No page turns, Tom, sorry.
A little my page turns.
I know you can use a little page turn. I think we can add page turns. And we did provide a salary worksheet as well, it's a separate one. And it does the same thing. You can look at that, and then just adjust one, one tab or one cell rather, and it will adjust all of the salary support.
If you would send that to us, just to make sure we all have it.
Absolutely.
Double up our totals, but it'd just be great. If we all send it, if some of us want to talk afterwards and find a time, we could sit down and maybe I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm happy to, what do, listen, you, any time?
Okay, thank you for all your work. Appreciate it. It's helpful. It's helpful, like, to be able to issue.
You know, just as an observation, the commission budget, just, you know, huge increase. I talked to Lori this morning. I know there's half a million dollars in there, which is a highway measurement grant. So there's a couple of new things in there. Like Jeff suggested, we take that account of general issues. That's one of the reasons it's a big increase. A couple of other things, I think what made them their budget, they kind of put it at a high level, high ask for your lack, and look at it on a realistic basis. So there's going to be some, some trivia there at the end of the day, so.
Thanks for the message. Anything else on the budget? Okay.
Sorry, one way, our office within the Jane of, in Jerry Geigel, Nancy, has started looking at other funds that we, that may have money that we can bring back to county general. So it's going to be a long project, but we are trying to find, finish those in our office. It's, it's heading that. And we're trying to make sure that months in my view, between me, bring it back to county general. So to help out. And she's made a pretty big dent in that project. So she's been reaching out to their department heads to help to get earnings and stuff. So that's just something else we're trying to get from you guys. But maybe just get some revenue from the report. Thank you.
Our elected officials, any funded organizations have anything to say? Department heads? Yes.
Kail Stevens, Montgomery Highway. Tom, I can give you an update on our funding projects for this year. We're about halfway done. We've made Richmond Road, 525 East up by Carlington, and 525 East, the Friday Road South of 32. They're currently out on 1075, South Shamondale. And then we're going to ramp up on 1,000 South, just off of 231. So we're about halfway done. It's looking good, and we'll be ready to seal it next year.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Around cardio, 1100?
Yeah.
What's the answer there?
I can't speak to that. That's a question for Jay.
Yeah.
I can give you my opinions, of course, but we're going to go that far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Longwell Building Administrator. Here's your monthly courthouse and Thomas K. Milligan update. The Thomas K. Milligan Center, the ADA improvements there are complete. They were as of August 27th. And so we are completing the voicing on that, which we should be doing in the next week or so. And there was a $6,000 credit. As far as the courthouse, we're in phase three on the interior, which is actually a part of phase three, a part of phase four, which means nothing to you. What it is, is the prosecutor's area on the second floor. All the offices are getting upgraded, new carpet, new paint, new ceiling, new lights. So the prosecutors have been displaced for this period of time. So they are on the first floor, the new area on the second floor, where the clerk used to be. We're also working in the courtrooms next week. The judges will be on at least three days that week. We have some like work to do in Superior Two and Superior One. We're going to do that work that week. We're also working in Circuit Court, carpeting their office areas. So we've got to move them out. So a lot of moving and shuffling and furniture going on in the building on the third floor in phase three, where we're doing interior room, adding bathrooms on the third floor. So that is in the midst of moving right now. So moving well on the interior. The scheduled turnover date for the interior is about December 15th, and I think we're ahead of that now because they're incorporating two, you know, two phases together. So on the exterior, we're still waiting on the cornice to go up. The roofing is getting closely finished. They're doing the last bit of metalwork on the top of the building. All of this gets go to work, and it's also cubicle work around the perimeter. You see the copper around the edges. So they're finishing up that this week, and then they'll finish the rest of the slater roof, which it's about 80% of it at this point. So we're getting concealed up as far as rain and snow. So that's moving well. And then we'll also do the cornice work, the metal crown, leisure room along the courthouse overhang. So that should be moving in the next couple of weeks and getting some of that on. Other exterior items, we're still working on stone face all around the building. And then the south porch, we did run into some areas of the, of the stone slide porch that need some attention, so we are working on that now. And that's pretty well the update of the courthouse.
Clock on the fourth side, as soon as I'm...
As soon as, as soon as that lift gets here, which, that lift will be here till after this gathering's done. So as soon as that's here, we will be up there.
What's the estimated completion on the house, sorry?
It's at the same turnover, end of December. And if everything goes well, the exterior will be done by then, no problem. But we do have to worry about the weather coming up, so.
You used the wet snow.
I didn't say snow. I said wet.
Earlier you said, earlier you said rain and snow.
True.
Good job, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Our elected officials. You ready?
Part of your, yeah, I haven't. Back of the room.
You put up a deal with some money back?
Not yet. I'm going to make that next month. I just wanted to follow up the radio issue that we spoke about, about your hearing, and, and just kind of get some guidance from you as to what you want for me to move forward with that. I, I think I, moving on to everybody, the total, along with the leasing options as well. So obviously, I mean, if we did it today, I would expect that equipment, I mean, in less than two months, I mean, these things are sitting around. So I just want to check with you to see what direction you want me to go with that and what would like for me, if anything, to move forward with that.
Well, Steve, I just looked the other way a little bit. And I know you've got the, you've got different ways we can make it. All once, or a little bit at a time, and then there's no penalty for paying it off early if we want to. And I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we kind of talk like with the way things are as far as funding and not knowing where we're be. Might not be bad to do it over, over time, is that what you and I were talking about? Because then we can pay over time, but then also, one thing we wanted to know is, if we pay over time, are they warranting that, that period of time? How, is the warranty going to stay while we're, while we're paying for them?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and then is, probably we give some money for the old stuff, or was that just baked in on the bid?
No, there's no money for the old stuff. I mean, it's.
We'll just keep it or do?
It's obsolete.
Yeah.
It's technology, you know what I mean? So I mean, as soon as we get the new ones, if we get new ones and put those in, they'll be updated right into the lease ground. So I mean, it makes no difference to me. I, I just want to check and follow up with the council to see what direction, if any, you want me to go with that.
I'd love for little guidance here. So I'll phone with that come out and... Did you see him? Yeah.
Tom Pine County Administrator. So we did forward that to Jeff Peters to ask, at the request of David Hunt and Gary on what funds. He did recommend that we look at using the CCD fund. And he said that the fund balance is pretty healthy and that you could either pay it all as cash and would not be that big of an impact on the CCD fund, or you could pay it over many years, or a few years.
It sounds like you were now moving a little more to probably first year anyway. You really went upfront in your...
Yeah, you would probably get it before that. I mean, I think it's, I mean, I'm here with Justin. I think it would be November, at the earliest, probably December.
So I think that the question is, do you want to order them and pay it all upfront? Out of the fund, or do you want to pay interest on?
What do you think?
I saw, I saw your worry over there. You might just want to put it on your next agenda and make those decisions at that time. That would allow time for ordering and getting it closed out. You'll also, if you do CCD, you'll need to do additional appropriation anyway. So if you did take action here at the local meeting, it seems to me, whatever that is, in terms of decision-making, paying all the funds or paying your time, paying your interest fund. Once you make those decisions, then you can go forward. But really, not on your agenda, so you can't make your decisions today. But maybe that would be the best thing to do. Maybe you could continue to work with the sheriff to see what he recommends and then take the simple reason you have from Jeff Peters and decide whether that's what you want.
Well, I appreciate you guys working on it and moving forward. And I think it's a safe, a big safer thing. I, I think it'll be put on the agenda for next month and think about how we want to do that.
Okay, Tom, did you get that?
Put it on the agenda.
I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Any other elected officials?
Morning again, Heather, the Grand Treasurer's Office. Just wanted to let everybody know that we're having the tax sale on October 7th at Ten Man. Mindy and I are hosting that online. And this year, we have the smallest number of properties that we've certified. We only had 42 properties that were certified. We're down to 30 properties now. Last year, when we did the online sale, it was very successful. It was our first year. We sold all but one property, so we look forward to having a successful sale again this year. It opens it up to more than, more people. By being online, we can have other people from across the state or even across the country. Although ideally, we'd like those taxpayers to be in our county. Also want to let you know that at the end of July, we mailed out 1,200 delinquent statements, made 800 manings, and we have collected over a million dollars worth of delinquent taxes by that mailing. So it really paid off to do so. Very proud of where we're sitting with judgments as well as our tax sales. So, and as far as interest, I think we should be looking at the same as last year or maybe even a little bit more than last year.
Thank you for doing the extra work.
Yep.
Bringing in the extra money.
Yep.
Anyone else? Brett? Matt? Mike? Steve?
Question, with the numbers we have now, is there any discussion? I think you mentioned that Jeff is going to take a look at the numbers we have today, too. Update him, or where are we on that? Or do we want to?
I will send the report to Jeff as well, just so you can kind of see what you guys are looking at. Now, if there's any questions. Jeff, I don't know if you guys have asked him to do an updated plan? I don't know where you guys see on that. The last numbers I have from Jeff were from, I believe, April. So a lot of times, he updates his plan after the June 30th numbers. So I don't know if that's been requested and or not. If you would like me to request it, I can be back for you. I have the call with him today anyway, so. Yes, please do that.
Okay, I hear that.
Question. Thank you. Any public comment?
Just a reminder, the motor protest nation's race is coming up. So if you're interested in attending the weekend of October 3rd through the 5th, and Sherry and Jessica and Ryan have been on the committee, they're working hard to coordinate that. And the parade is on October 3rd at 5:00 downtown, so I encourage everyone to attend. And then if you want to attend the race, the actual race is on Sunday, October 5th, and the qualifications are on October 4th. But we're going to start having a lot of folks come into our community. And it should be a busy weekend for our county. Oh, and I should mention that at the last meeting, they did say Inda would have their, if their construction is not done on 231, they would have all the information removed. Information, all their structures and their equipment removed for that weekend. So that way, we won't have only two lanes of traffic on 231. So miss anything, Sherry, Jessica, or Ryan? And Lori has birthday coming up, too. And David Hunt, David Hunt also has a birthday coming up. So happy birthday.
Anything else you want to get out of the call? Okay, we need to up through the claims at the bottom. One is more of a dealer, and the other one is more Peters.
I have a report.
Second.
It's been written, and it's extended that we approved the claims for those two minutes. All those in favor, say aye. All those at the same time. Motion carried. Anything else? The next round of the meeting is October 14th at nine here. And do I have?
Not approve. A churn. A journey. And there's, and there's a second.